All right, we are live. It is a couple of minutes early.
We're a little early, one minute.
We'll wait one more minute and see if Bonnie shows up. All right, I have seven o'clock.
Okie doke.
All right, call the meeting to order. Good evening, this is the May 16th meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. I am going to start with introductions. To my right, Kathy?
Hi, Kathy Mayo.
I'm Terry Bonzer, vice chair.
Trace Bascom, chair.
Romeo Denae.
Kevin Bassett, alternate.
And Kevin, I am going to seat you tonight for Bonnie. She'll be seated and voting. Thank you for coming. All right, the first, we have two cases this evening. And the first case we have is case 23-004 from David Wit... Oh, I just said it too. Witwicky? Okay. I'm gonna read before you start how this will work. I will have you come forward. You can review your case with us, going over the five criteria and why a variance is needed. This would be for both of you. The board will be able to ask you some questions and that you can reply back to. I don't see any butters here today, so we won't have to go with the pros and the cons for butters with you. And then we'll discuss it and move forward from there, okay? All right, would you please come forward? State your name and address, please, thank you. And then you can proceed.
Hi, David Witwicky. My home address is 139 Holton Street, Davis, Massachusetts. But I'm here for, you know, to get a variance on the 30 White's Grove Road property for a shed.
Okay. You completed some paperwork with five, what we call five criteria. Is the application for a variance, it's the next page and the page after that. If you wouldn't mind going through that with us, please.
Application for variance?
Correct, if you flip that page over, it should say supporting information. Go ahead and review that with us, please.
Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because shed would not impede on any other property or water views. And the variance were granted, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because we are only looking to upgrade the existing property. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because room for a shed is needed for storage, for maintenance tools, water toys, lawn furniture, winter storage. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because there is no obstruction to water views. Shed would enhance the property as no equipment would be visible outside from White's Grove Road.
Okay. And number five deals with unnecessary hardship.
Following to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in necessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because most properties have storage areas and sheds and garages on White's Grove Road.
And for B, you stated that the property is too small for a shed to be 20 feet from the property line.
I'm sorry?
And for part B to that, you had annotated that our property is too small for a shed to be 20 feet from the neighbor.
Okay, right, yeah.
Yes, okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple. Yeah, you got, you had it, you said you wanted 120 square feet, so it's 10 by 12.
10 by 12.
But you had it laid out like 12 by 14, those stakes, so that...
So that's where I'm actually gonna be dropping some stone there.
Oh, okay.
For the shed to sit on.
Okay.
So I just wanted like a rough idea of where, so my neighbor could see.
Right.
So...
Right, yeah, we were just, we went there and then we started measuring, we said, but you did, you said 10 by, you know, 120 square feet, so we assumed it was 10 by 12, but it was bigger. So the other thing is that the shoreline, they have a shoreline protection in Nottingham.
You know, I looked that up.
Fifty feet back, and I don't, I'm not sure you could put anything in that 50 foot.
I looked that up, and I went through the questionnaire, and it said it wouldn't be a problem.
Really? I don't know. Because they don't really, they don't allow too much in the 50-foot zone unless something, you're replacing something, right Kevin? Yeah, I mean, you're on the lake, so...
You have that with you? I do not.
You said you looked it up, and so with what you...
And the shore protection...
With what you read, you think you're exempted, or did you actually get something?
From what I read.
Because the building inspector now is, you know, he's interim, so I don't know if he would have picked up on that or not, so... And then when you put it, you put it, you know, where you have it, you probably want, it's gonna kind of block you from your neighbor a little bit, and then you probably want access to the lake through there.
Well, yeah, for like all the...
Right, boats and backing in and...
Yeah.
But did you look, I mean, how come you don't want to put it in the back more, back, in the back, you've got, over on the left side, you know, when you're looking at your camera from the back, on the left, there's a bunch of...
There's not much wood?
Chips, wood chips. But you could, I looked there, it looked like you could fit it right in there very nicely. You might be, you might need a variance from the back line because that's an odd line, but...
But I was kind of hoping for room for parking for a few vehicles, and then if I put the shed up there, it would, I'd spend tens of thousands of dollars to remove those pine trees that are up there.
Well, it wasn't too bad where the wood chips were. It looked like plenty of room where the wood chips were.
Well, that's where I was gonna have my parking.
Right, that would take your parking up, yeah.
I don't know, Terry. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Not yet.
Because the shoreline stuff is so important, it's hard to make a decision without knowing those facts. On the, on the sketch that he gives, he sketches 22, plus or minus, and then two, probably a pin, and then another five feet, so he's in the 27, 20, 30 feet range.
Is this like...
I'd hate to approve something that can come back to bite us from another...
Bite us except due to shoreline protection.
Is there an issue with getting more information and postponing the decision for, for our next meeting, from your perspective?
Well, if I have to, yeah. I mean, I can, unfortunately, I don't have that information with me from the Shore Protection Agency.
I'll tell you what. Let's just say we approve.
Yeah.
And you start construction. You're gonna be in a world of hurt if you're within that 50 feet. They'll come back and nail you. I'm just telling you. So you'd have to, even if we approved tonight, you'd have to get permission for building within that 50-foot setback from the shoreline, under the shoreline protection. Don't screw with those guys. They have a very heavy hammer.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And the other thing, I think, even if we granted it, I think you would still have to get a shoreline protection, you'd have to submit something to the state, get a shoreline protection permit, and I don't think, I think that's where...
You can't move it closer to where your house is.
Closer to where your house is.
So I'm looking at this, the shed is way down here, close to the water. Can you move it up? So that it's outside of the 50 feet?
That's, I mean, now you're talking in...
Taking trees out?
Yeah, you owe a lot of money. Lot of money in tree removal.
That's a funny shaped lot, I mean, I'm surprised you don't own all the way to the water. I guess it starts from the back pin, it must go down or something, so... Did you have, you had a survey here and there to find all those pins?
I haven't had it surveyed, no.
Oh, okay, so somebody had found it before you?
They're still there.
Okay. Yeah, no, they were all available. I thought, I thought you had somebody in because some of them were pretty tough to find.
Yeah, no, I mean, those have been there, we just bought the property back in August.
Yeah.
And I mean, they were right there, plain as day back then.
Yeah, no, they were good.
They're still there today.
No, I just assumed you, when you were doing the shed, I assumed you had somebody
Shoreline protection also covers removal of trees within that 50 feet, and I think even further in, so be careful on that.
I've been keep, you know, been careful with that. You know, I'm keeping my points, you know, per square, 50 feet, 25 feet, whatever. And I, like I said, I got plenty of trees, so I'm good there, I think.
Any other questions? What is the wish of the committee?
Kevin brought up a good question here about if we approve, shoreline protection gets
I'm not prepared to vote based upon...
I would go to continuing for myself. This...
Up to the applicant, is it that?
The board is uncomfortable because of the proximity to Patakaway Lake. We are asking if you would be willing to at least give them a call, have them, you know, fill out the application, send it in, see if they say a yea or an nay to you, or have somebody...
The Shore Protection Agency?
Correct.
Is that the exact name?
It is...
It's, well, it's under DES.
It's the Shoreline Protection Act.
Correct.
Under Department of Environmental Services.
Correct. I have the state ordinance here that talks about it.
I can't pull it up.
No, yeah, there seems to be this big bubble around this building that does not allow for any of that, but we have, I have it right here in front of me, the, in our rulebook. And it does talk about the construction excavation, filling, or other activity that impacts less than 1,500 square feet and adds no more than 900 square feet of impervious area, so, I mean, if they're talking even less than, then it sounds like anything greater than is also on here, so...
Anything greater than what?
Greater than the 1,500 square feet, so I would suggest you at least make, let, be able to speak to us and say that you've either spoken to someone or received information from them, and what you're proposed to do is not going to have an impact.
Okay.
And then we can talk about it again at another, at the next meeting.
Email or document of any sort would help the board, I think. We can view that, Jim.
No, thank you, yes, that is true.
Okay.
Right, because we can, we're only here to waive town ordinance, this is the state.
Yeah, no, I know.
This is the state rule, so there's not much we can do with that rule.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to... Do you continue? Continue the case to a date decided and add that caveat of the shoreline protection permit or non-needful of?
I'll do that, Kathy?
Yes, I make a motion that we continue the case number 23-004 Witwicky, 30 White's Grove Road, for a proposed shed within the five feet from the property line until we have, until he corresponds with the DES, Department of Environmental Services regarding the shoreline protection for Patakaway State, the lake, Patakaway Lake, excuse me.
Our next meeting is June 20th. That gives you just over a month to deal with bureaucracy.
Yeah.
Sorry. That should, should be sufficient time for them. So when you notify them, you could let them know that you are, you have a date set to go before the zoning board of the 20th, and maybe that will help, I have no idea.
Okay.
I've never dealt with them.
Great.
Is it...
I second.
Yes. There's a motion and a second to continue the case, and it would be until June 20th, and that you would provide for us at that time some information from DES on the Shoreline Protection Act. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is 5-0, so we'll see you next morning.
Okay, so everything else is fine, the paperwork that I have here with the town is fine?
Correct. We don't need anything further from you, I don't think at all, except for that information about the shoreline protection.
And if it doesn't, if they don't approve of it, you might want to have a plan B, I'm thinking, right, maybe, no? For maybe somewhere else to put the shed, if you would need a variance, that's all. Just thinking.
Yeah, absolutely. If they say that's a no-go, then...
Yeah.
Right, and I think you could adjust that under, I don't know, I don't think it's a new notice, I think we could just grant it in the back, you know?
If relocation needed to be?
Correct. Yes, you wouldn't have to refile.
Okay, all right.
That's why we continued it, so...
Okay.
And anybody out there who's watching this, who is around you, who has any type of concern, is now on notice that they, the meeting will be heard, I mean, your hearing will be heard again on June 20th. No new notices go out, so you don't have to worry about that at all, okay?
All right, very good.
All right.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
All right, our second case this evening is case 23-005. It is from Jeffrey and Emily Silva of 96 Stevens Hill Road, requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C3A. Again, one up. Please state your name and your address.
Jeff Silva, 96 Stevens Hill Road.
Emily Silva, 96 Stevens Hill Road.
Okay, and could you review your paperwork with us, please?
I will from my cell phone, because I turned in my only copy, but I was able to take a photograph of this, so...
Do you want, she has an extra copy.
Yep.
I mean, it's legible, I can read from here, it's fine.
It'll be easier from the paper. Thank you.
How did you get such a long line?
It's just a big, long rectangle.
She was grimy.
They're all like that.
Yeah. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it would not adversely, adversely impact neighboring parcels or the rural character of the town. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because it would comply with the setback requirements for existing buildings and structures. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would provide the current residents with the necessary structure for housing and protecting vehicles and equipment. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the style of the new structure would be in keeping with the style of the current residents and the rural character of the town. Unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because nothing will interfere, interfere with traffic, public use of nearby land, safety and health of the general public, and no overcrowding will occur. The proposed use is a reasonable one because approval had been granted to the previous owners, and initial work had already begun before the property was sold. Continuing their work would provide current residents with reasonable protection of their vehicles and equipment from weather. And then the last one, unnecessary hardship. There's no other reasonable location for the proposed structure, a garage. The work done by previous owners, including clearing and paving and gravel, would have to be undone if the variance is not granted.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Do we have the previous variance?
We do not.
Would have been granted in 2015 to Leila and Jason Shell, I don't know if you would still have that or not.
No, I had wondered about that, but when I thought about it, was not a day that Alan is in the office, so I wasn't able to follow up on that.
15, it's obviously out of date.
Well, and it doesn't matter because I happened to look up in the ZO, and the variance does not carry with the property, it's specific to the owners.
Understood.
Because I did look at that.
Yeah, but there's usually a date, or building permits reactive, that's all.
Right.
Like a year or something.
Yeah, I think it runs two years, usually.
It is two years, and like I said, it wouldn't even matter because it's different owners, so, which, I don't know, I don't make the rules, and I don't know why that one specifically doesn't, why it wouldn't stay with the property.
I don't know if they ever applied for a building permit, I think they went through the, this process and were approved. This is just all information that we got from them and our real estate agent at the closing, that's kind of a draw to the property, so...
How long, how long have you owned the property?
Seven years.
With this overhead picture, there's a, two cars parked here.
Yep.
And there's a gray spot in front of the two cars.
That is exactly where.
Yeah, that's where.
That's what I was just making sure. Okay. And there also seems to be, there's some kind of a white spot right over here, is this a building?
Not our, no.
That's the neighbor's property. You can see, I believe from the photograph, there's a green roof, that's her house, and then behind her house is her garage.
I think his pictures do...
I don't think I'm seeing that. Is it just a white spot up here, and I don't know if it's a roof or...
I think that's just an anomaly in the picture.
Is it snow?
It might be snow.
Yeah, there's still some snow on the ground when I took this photograph, so I think that's exactly what that is.
There's a snow pile.
There's no structure there.
Okay, that's fine.
Could be a UAP.
I see what he's saying, it's a...
Probably a snow pile.
Snow pile right here, that's exactly what that is.
I know when Mr. Bonzer and I went out and looked, we noticed that even to move it to the side more would not be a possibility because of the culvert and the wet land and air. Yes.
Yeah, there wasn't much, a lot of room, I mean, your front lawn is, you know, it's not wetland, but I mean, the water comes across there.
It is, and pools, yeah, pools in front of the house, runs to the culvert, and then runs pretty much down the property line to the...
To the back.
Yeah, you didn't really have a lot of...
That's, that's, yeah, that's the spot.
You didn't have a lot of places to put it.
If I had a choice, I would put it right next to the house, but I can't, so...
I know, because they had to build, you know, they built the house up, obviously.
Right.
Filled around it, and, yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet.
This actually is, is it just gonna be on a slab?
Are you able to look up to see if there was ever a variance or a building permit?
What was the last name?
Shell, S-H-E-L-L.
I was looking, I don't see, I think it was 2014.
As far as I know.
Maybe it was, I think it was 14.
It could have been 14, so they, they sold the house pretty abruptly. They had two children, and then they were suddenly expecting a third, and the house is not big enough for three children, so I think they abandoned whatever plans they had to expand and then sold the house and...
Yeah, I'm not seeing any...
Yeah. This was, yeah.
And so specifically, you bought in what year?
2016.
2016.
16, so you looked at 16, 15, 14, 13-ish, so we'll, we'll assume there was physical activity, but no zoning board or building permit activity, based upon that.
Well, and to be honest, at this point, it doesn't matter if the previous owners did or did not get a variance because you would have to come before us anyway today,
There isn't, there isn't much, many other place you could put it, so...
It looks like it's pretty...
This is our only hope, really.
All that land.
Plenty of firewood.
That's a good thing. Any other questions?
No.
Kathy? Mary?
Build a drag strip over here, it's almost a perfect quarter of a mile.
If it was flat.
It's just a big hill that goes up. Oh, it is, yeah.
They might have a hard time on a variance for that.
I'd entertain a motion, if anybody would like to do this. Thank you.
Okay. I make, make a motion, we approve case 23-005 Silva, 96 Stevens Hill Road, and it's for an application for Jeffrey and Emily Silva requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of a 24 by 30-foot unattached garage. Proposed, the proposed accessory structure would be 40 feet from the front property line and 30 feet from the side property line, where the zoning ordinance states that the setback between the property line and accessory building shall be 50 feet. The property is located at 97 Stevens Hill Road in Nottingham.
96. 96.
Oh, 96.
Even your one.
I was giving it to your neighbor, I guess.
97 doesn't exist.
96 Stevens Hill Road in Nottingham, and is identified as tax map 46 lot 0409.
Is there a second? I second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we shall vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it's 5-0. Hey, your request has been approved, there is... There is a thirty-day window in which someone may come forward and say they don't agree with this. So I wouldn't start construction right away. But kind of not easy to get hold of contractors to start right away anyway, so you can move forward.
So now that you've approved this, I'm, just being unfamiliar with the process, I'm still going to have to go back to the building inspector for.
Permit.
For the permit, right?
Yeah.
Is there a document?
Yes, you will be getting a document from Alana.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
With it, and is it five days, Alana, that you do the?
Yeah, I'll get it to you Friday.
Okay.
And that, that's what you would bring and say, it's been approved, and then you can contact whoever you want to for the construction or buy the stuff if you're doing it yourself or whatever.
Is that by mail or picking, picking up in person? Okay. I mean, I'm gonna have to come to your office anyway, so.
I'm gonna make a suggestion.
Sure.
It looks like you have a service drop for electricity come to the corner of the house that's closest to the driveway, to the, well, to the driveway. Um, are you gonna electrify your garage?
We intend to, yes.
I was gonna say, put your trench in, put the pipe in, even if you weren't contemplating it. Just have it there because eventually you'll want it.
Right. We're just trying to figure out what our options are as far as what we, if we have to come from the house or if we can come from the road, we're just trying to figure it out, so.
If you come from the road, you'll get a, you'll have to have a separate.
Meter.
Meter.
Yes.
And a separate service.
Yep.
And they might, Eversource, I assume is.
It's New Hampshire Electrical Co-op.
Oh, it's New Hampshire Electrical Co-op. Um, Eversource just tagged me and made me, they said, oh, well, your, your external structure is, what do you do over there? I said, well, it's kind of like a welding shop and I do stuff like that. Okay, it's commercial use, so we're gonna bill you for commercial. I have to fight with them about it.
You have two meters?
Well, one of them's down because of the last big snowstorm took everything down. That's what started the whole thing.
I got you.
But, uh, so you might want to take it off the house, but that's up to you. If you have a two-hundred ampere panel at the house, that'll give you enough electricity to go to the garage also.
Yep. All right, appreciate it.
Whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
You're all set.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You too.
I think you guys get started within a year or two, huh?
Pardon?
Have to get started on the work within a year.
They have thirty days to wait, but then they, yes, they've got two years.
Yeah, two years.
Yep, two years.
Okay.
Building inspector will go over all that with them when they go in. Okay, at this time, we would normally take public comment, but there's no further public here, so we'll go on to other business. Uh, we did have the bylaws that we reviewed last month have been updated per our suggestions. It should be in your binders. Uh, we all signed that cover sheet and I gave that back to Alana, so we're all set. Oh, there's been a request by the planning board to have a, sorry, I keep putting these on and off, a joint meeting of the zoning board and planning board and other departments that was set for August twenty-third. So August twenty-third, there will be a joint meeting. You don't all have to attend, but if you have any concerns based on the cases that we've been seeing, anything that you think needs to be changed to our zoning ordinance or master plan or anything like that, please bring that forward and we can get that information off to them, okay? Yes, yes, great. Um, any updates from anybody? Anybody done any online training?
That appears to be a Wednesday, by the way, just so you'll know, it's a Wednesday.
Kevin, anything new from you? Romeo? Kathy? Terry? Approval of minutes of four eighteen, the last month. Alana did send those all out to us, that everybody have a chance to review them. Any changes to the minutes?
No.
Uh, motion to approve?
Second. Oh, you didn't make the motion.
I'd, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for four eighteen twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So Terry and Romeo. A motion to approve the minutes of, of, from April has been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we shall vote.
Aye.
Aye. I mean, no, it's, uh, unanimous, five oh, oh. Anything else? Any cases for next month?
I can't remember what it's going for. Animals? Somebody has more animals than the property. I think it's a special exception, actually, I think it's not so.
Okay. Oh, special.
How many, if you, do you remember how many?
No, I think you might have like two more pigs than was supposed to have.
Well, I didn't know we had that.
In the, in the aqua part of protection.
Oh, in the aqua.
Oh.
And we have a continuance next month.
Yes. Yes, so we have.
Guaranteed to have one meeting.
Correct. But nothing new?
Yeah.
Poss, possibly a special exception?
Possibly.
Okay. All right. So everybody mark your calendars because we do have a meeting next month and please, if you're not going to be here, let me know because if there's enough of us out, we need to let the applicants know ahead of time, if we can. All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Second motion to adjourn and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, adjourn.